I will call the meeting to order. Tonight, we, the majority of our time won't be spent on the budget. As I'm sure everyone knows, we do need to approve a budget and a warning this evening. So those are the major goals in front of us. So with that being said, are there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Marla, do you want to do your usual work?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of school board meeting minutes of February 19th, 2019, and approve an employee family leave. The name is Sarah, S-E-R-A. Hi, Jack.
Hi.
For year 2019 to year 20. And I did not have the school she was in.
Founders.
Okay, founders. Also approve the warrants.
I forgot to ask if anybody needed to pull anything. That should depend the first question. Yes?
I thought the leave wasn't until fiscal year 21. If I read the...
Right, so it's school year 19 to 20. So the school year that starts next September and goes through June of 20.
Year 21.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty. So it's...
Can we be sure of that, please?
You wouldn't be asking for it if it was for year after next.
It appeared to me like it was a two-year ask as opposed to a one-year ask. When I read the notes...
My understanding is that it wasn't asked for from the end of her F Y leave to the end of this one.
Says I intend to return.
Just can return from the...
Twenty twenty. All right, I misunderstood.
Okay, so we shouldn't have done that, but we didn't. Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Of saying aye. Okay, so it's time for our big topic of discussion, the budget. And Brian and Beth, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so this evening, what we wanted to do was just really quickly, before we dive into the work, is sort of set a scene. The path that we've gone has come from December 12th, where we talked about the statewide guidance, and we got the December 1st numbers from the tax commissioner. The board at the time gave some guidance and said that it wanted to meet the needs of the district, and that it would go from there. Then we had our work sessions, January 29th, some work on the board meeting at February 5th with CTE, work on the 19th as a budget session, and then we had a snow event, and then March 6th, I think is how we work in there, or maybe the snow event happened before the 19th.
Between the fifth and...
We've had enough snow events.
It's confusing.
So just to really kind of just quickly just set the scene, if you're just tuning in, we work with a set of budget priorities and building blocks, and that equals a taxpayer impact. So what we work on is back in October, really stemming from our summer retreat, the leadership team worked on establishing what we call our big rocks. What are our priorities going into the FY 20 budget? We were committed to having a focus on first instruction for all learners, social emotional learning, strengthening and expanding our professional learning communities, and then the operational priority was safety and security. And then we go through that process of staff ratios, classroom sizes, enrollment projections, all that work that we've done over the course of our time together. And then the operational building blocks, which many of those have been addressed in materials throughout the course of time. And then that comes into taking a look at the taxpayer impact, available fund balance plays a big role, equalized pupil count, version 12 currently, property tax rates, and then a whole series of yields and income sensitivities, which apparently may or may not change, but we'll probably need to wait until early summer to find that out. That was all narrative. Where we've been for quite some time is with an educational spending projection of just over $61 million, or approximately 1.8%, 88% increase. What we looked at was a tax rate impact there, in which our incentivized tax rate with that educational spending would be going down slightly, just over 1% decline in the incentivized rate. And then when you start adding in the common level of appraisal, we'd be adding about a cent and a half to Westford and under a half a cent for Essex Town and Essex Junction. So that's where we've been. Recently, we had a proposal come to the board that introduced five additional FTE for social emotional leaders in our buildings, and the proposal was to offset that with fund balance carryover. And a one FTE co-principal for Essex Elementary and Founders Memorial also to be offset with fund balance. So we have no change with that proposal to our ed spending. Our budget goes up and our offsetting revenues go up, but there's no change to the 1.88% increase, or no change to any of the tax rates. If we were going to take a look at those proposals but not use the offsetting carryover, then what we'd be looking at is an increase of our budget to $81,486, but the offsetting revenue would remain the same as we've been looking at. So we would have an increase to our ed spending of under 3%. And I shared with the board that the state's now currently looking at ed spending on average across the state going up about 3.9%. So this is considerably below the statewide average. We would then, with our equalized pupils, come down to a ed spending by equalized pupil that would be about 2.87%. The statewide average right now for that is about 4.1 or so, so considerably below that. And our tax rates are still looking at basically being flat on an incentivized basis, and with the CLA modification coming in, it's about a 3.2 cent increase for Westford, 2 cent increase for Essex Junction, Essex Town. Now, if we were going to look at no staff, and we're going to take the 635 of fund balance carryover and have that come into the operating fund to lower tax rates, then in this case, our budgeted expenditures remain the same, but our offsetting revenues increase. That drives down our ed spending to under 1% and would have a resulting incentivized tax rate that would be a decrease of 2.28%. And in that case, all our communities would enjoy, after CLA, a reduction in tax rate.
Wes, okay. Something's wrong here. Oh. Westford's always higher than the other two, so something's wrong here. I'm not sure exactly what, but...
I'll check the, the math is, works on a standardized basis, so I'll see where the formulas may have gone wrong. This is a case in which we do no staff, and we bring in all the additional fund balance, $1 million of fund balance, and we bring it in. What I would suggest is that both these scenarios are bringing in fund balance, while they would present a wonderful scenario for one year...
That's right.
...would have a difficult task at following up the next and future years.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong. I wasn't looking at it as a decrease, I was looking at it as an increase. So it's correct.
And then for tonight's work, we have the open issues. We need to get some closure on the proposal to strengthen our social emotional learning systems and support. We need some closure on the K5 leadership innovation for instructional excellence proposal. And then those two will lead into a fund balance strategy of whether we fund or not fund the, and with offsetting dollars, the decision for the SEL, the decision for K5, and then the remaining, what we'd want to do either to the capital, to the repair and capital expense fund, or back to the operating fund to lower taxes. So those are the various elements, and as you said, Martha, we are at that point where we need to either approve it this evening and sign a warning, or we need to have an emergency meeting by Friday noon.
So we're going to jump in to talk about the strengthening social and emotional learning across our system with our social and emotional leaders, and then to remind you of our why, I'm not going to read it again, I felt like I keep reading it, but we did create the why as a leadership team and believe this is why we need to move forward in supporting our students in social and emotional learning. This is very tiny print, for those that didn't get it ahead of time, I'm sorry. This is parts of a job description, a draft job description, which is in the blue. So this person would work collaboratively with the building administrator, guidance counselors, anybody around behavior to pull that group together and lead that in social and emotional learning. As a leadership team, we have created a draft action plan for social and emotional learning. Part of that is adopting some standards or competencies across our district pre-K12. This position would help to implement those strategies in a very, in working with Dylan in these, people would have a PLC working with Dylan to make sure that the standards are implemented consistently across our district. And we know, we all feel like we need to do more around that with empathy and working with students on their social and emotional learning. It's part of, it's not a subject that one goes to to learn, it's embedded in everything we do in our schools, and that's what we need these leaders to help do that, along with the principals and guidance counselors. But, so the outcomes that we put together, it's about students, preparing them, for every student to be ready to learn. We have children that come to school that aren't ready to learn, and when you hear their stories, Laura and Grace and I were just talking about that, some kids just come to school with a lot of responsibilities, even as a young child. So if we can work with those students and teachers can understand how to do that and have strategies that across the district will help prepare kids to be ready to learn, and that is in our continuous improvement plan. Strengthening relationships with students and adults and making sure that every student has at least one adult they can turn to in a school, which is really important. The social and emotional needs of all students, I want them, we all want them to feel safe to come to school, that they're supported socially and academically, but first they need to be supported socially, and they need to understand that. We want them to experience a culture that, and I'm not saying they don't experience it now, but we really need to make that as soon as people, as soon as kids walk in the door. We need to make that really apparent to all students. I think we have students that will tell you they feel safe, and they have people they can turn to, and we have a group of students that don't. So our goal is for, in all our schools, not just some of our schools, it's all of our schools. The teacher outcomes, we want them to experience the standards and be able to teach those standards and competencies throughout the day. We need help in teaching those teachers and training them and coaching them. We need coaching on that, so to bring some experts in on that, that's, we're really looking forward to that and need it. We also expect these leaders to lead us in some trainings on trauma and be able to do that work with our teachers. And then for a whole system, to be able to meet our competencies and standards. We want a system where we can assess how well we're doing with those standards, and we don't have that yet, and we need it. And we are in the forefront of doing that work. This is, this is work that's happening across the nation. I feel like we're out in front of it and pretty excited with that, with that work and the work that we've been doing as a leadership team, knowing we need to really focus in on this. Do you have questions at this point? And Dylan will be glad to help, and the rest of the leadership team that's out there, answer questions about these, specifically about these, this position. Yes, Martha?
There are five.
Five.
Right.
Yep.
I don't want, I'm concerned that folks are kind of kept confused with the proposal. So this proposal is to add five to the three.
Yes.
So what questions or comments do folks have about this proposal? Keely, and then Kim.
Because my question would be, if we approve these positions and are unable to hire five appropriately qualified persons, how would we decide to allocate the available personnel? And would it be possible to think about allocating this kind of support, which is mostly behind the scenes for staff, rather than face-to-face with students with a smaller group than per building as it is?
That's a good question. We did have a conversation, or we have had a conversation as a leadership team. We have that thinking too, like what if we don't find enough? We know that we have some people on staff now that would do a great job in this role, and it would maybe easier for us to hire the role that they might step out of, to do this kind of role. I think that's really exciting because we know that they would be good at this already, and that they already know our system. So it, for instance, we might have a guidance counselor that would be amazing at this. Probably easier to fill a guidance counselor position than one of these, and already know our system and students, which that, this is, that's, these people need to do that. Anybody else want to answer?
No, I think we'll have to address that if that were to come, we'll have to address that, look at the appropriate allocation if we didn't get five, but I think by looking at current staffing as well as, you know, getting out and analyzing and posting early, that will help with recruiting.
Kim? I was just wondering, I know in the, I think it was the November report, you talked about sort of studying as a leadership team and researching to determine our district's standards on social emotional learning. Have those been determined? Where are they found? How do we...
They have not been determined yet, so it is part of our action plan to do that. We have looked at many. We have not determined as a group which ones to adopt. Want to say anything more?
No, I think we're starting with the competencies in this world, so they use the term competencies to address sort of like the broad-based areas, like social awareness, or self-management, and those types of things. And then the standards are the specifics underneath. So we're currently looking at different models that address the competencies, the broader areas right now. There's a national website and association called Castle, which does a nice job, and we've looked at those. We are currently reading a book right now as a leadership team that looks at five competencies in a little bit different way. So I think as leaders, as we identify different models out there, we want to involve some of the stakeholders in our system to really, to finalize the competencies by the end of this school year, and that's our goal. We also want to look at the, currently we have transferable skills that we have tracked and that we encourage across our districts. We want to look at those and really wonder, and really identify how do those fit into those competencies too. We don't want to go in a completely different direction than some of the transferable skills that we've been working on, and we, and we also feel confident that they'll fit well within whatever, whatever model we choose.
So our task team, the leadership team designated a task team to really look for standards, look for model districts that were doing a great job in this. We did that, and we created a draft action plan. In the meantime, a great book came out, at the same authors that wrote the one that we're reading, Building Equity, and so it was like, whoa, here's a book that like came out. So they all have a copy now. We are beginning to read that book, and we actually put our action plan on a, let's not adopt this yet, let's see what as a group we can add to it from our new learning, but it is to determine some standards, competencies by the end of the year. So we'll be ready for those, and I will definitely share them with you. We'll be excited to, excited to do that work.
Thank you. Brendan?
So one of the thoughts that I've had in thinking about this is that it'll place new or different demands on teachers, and I'm wondering if there's the same level of enthusiasm among the faculty for this pretty significant undertaking as there is among the leadership team.
Would you like to speak to, we have somewhat of a, we have had conversations about that. As principals, you want to speak to that?
I'll speak, Brendan. So for myself, we actually, yesterday, this is Tuesday, and we were highlighting some of the systems that we have within our building, and we're trying to always tweak those systems. And the letters came up, SEL on the chart, and one of my teachers who's well-respected amongst the staff said, we're always talking about SEL, always. What are we doing to actually do something about it? And I reminded them that we, as a staff, have adopted the development design, and I shared that with all of you. And I actually said, and tomorrow night, I'm actually going to a board meeting where we're looking at increasing, and I use the letters B C B A, but I, so these SEL positions to be able to be in our schools more often. And immediately, there was a few like this, and a lot of head nods of appreciation, that we're putting our money where our mouth is, and that we're actually providing some resources to support the kids. So I think the staff, Brendan, to answer your question, is incredibly excited about this opportunity.
Do they understand that it will, I mean, by the description here, it looks like new demands will be placed on them, and a lot is already being asked of our teachers. Are they able to take more on?
Yeah, because I don't think this is, it won't feel as if it's adding more on. It will, it'll provide opportunities for, just to, it is, I mean, we are constantly looking for focused opportunities to teach transferable skills or to teach these things. It's just another layer of that, and another coach that I believe that the staff is ready to have. I do, thanks.
Dick?
I have a reference point on your question. This board approved a professional leave for one of my teachers. The reason why she's taking the professional leave, because she recognizes that she wants to do a much better job with her students' social emotional needs. So she's going back to school to gain those skills so that she can do the excellent work that she wants to do and has been doing in terms of teaching her class. But she's noticed that it's increasingly interfering with her providing the high-quality education she wants to provide her students. So she's taken it upon herself to say, if I see this as a problem, then I'm going to try to address it myself, greater learning. So you've approved her leave for professional leave. So I would say that's a good indicator of the teachers in all of our schools that recognize this as an area.
Peter?
Brendan, I would add that we already are asking our teachers to do this. This is supplying them with the guidance and the coaching they have had, professional development, the expertise to do it really, really well, as opposed to acting on their instincts.
Gotcha.
Which, you know, are, which everybody has to varying degrees, but you can't sort of measure those outcomes from your position. You're looking at a set of standards, and you're looking at coaching and professional development in helping students move forward, both kids with, you know, really severe trauma and kids who are not traumatized at all but need additional socialization.
One of the things that I was actually telling Beth about earlier is kids know what teachers they can go to and what teachers they, they don't feel comfortable going to. And I feel like a lot of the time, it's the same teachers that get just an overload of kids, and sometimes like what Brendan was saying is that it can be overwhelming. And, and you know, we talk a lot about equity for kids, but I also think that it's important to remember that as, as principals and as leaders in your schools, just be aware of what teachers might need to work a little bit harder on getting enough kids to be comfortable with them, and what teachers are, they already have too much.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
Do you have one, Amy, or...
No, I was just going to add another data point, I think, to build upon this. We haven't in many years, but we're offering a responsive classroom training the week after school gets out, and so another indication is, we had so many people sign up so quickly that we had to hire a second instructor, so we have nearly 60 teachers giving up the week after school gets out to attend a training to increase their skills. So absolutely an identified need.
And in addition to that, Peter and I are already, and have scheduled a series of workshops with Joelle Van Lent for both of our staffs for next year, readings and a syllabus, and we've got the year already planned out in terms of scope and sequence and working with staff around resilience and trauma and working with kids, and that's something that both of our staffs have expressed interest in, great interest in. So there's other things going on as well in terms of coaching and support, professional development.
I have to hand off to your Joelle thing, and that is around trauma training, and not a plug, D D, like I'm getting paid for it, I'm a design, but they have a, they have a two-day trauma workshop that my staff has said, if we can't do D D two this year, we want that. That's what came out of yesterday's meeting. So there, it's noticed across, across the setting, not just the administrative side, but also the teachers and IAs. So that's all.
Thanks. Other questions or comments? So, Marla?
The money piece we'll talk about later.
Correct. I mean it in terms of the choices and how, if we're going to do this, how we might pay for it.
Well, I'll give you my question. We had talked about it at the last meeting, the $635,000 if we do both proposals. Then we go into next year with increased staffing. In our promise of merger, we had said that by merging, we were going to be efficient and come up with some economies. So we're still working with a promise of merger, that we are out there with our taxpayers, sitting there in front of them at this annual meeting. So my question is, I know there's probably a plan for next year. I just wished we'd had some strategic discussions leading up to this, and how you're going to start eliminating some of the extra staffing for the promise of merger that we promised, and how it affects the budget next year.
Okay, so I think there are two pieces there. So we have had some extension, extensive discussion about the promise of merger, and that we've saved a total of $1.5 million, which is a half million dollars more than we promised. So that's in some of the materials from the last meeting. But as part of this proposal, there was a discussion about the fact that if we do this, then there would be an effort to, because we're paying for it potentially with one-time money, there would be an effort to backfill next year with some commensurate cuts. I don't know if it was exactly said it would all staffing, but something that would pay for it. So do you want to talk about it?
Yes. We will, as a leadership team and as district office leaders, we will be looking to where we can cut, absolutely. And we had talked about sometimes when you're innovative, you have to... you have to put that money upfront and then, and then work to figure out how that, where that's going to come from. But we are a dedicated team to see where that is going to come from. And it might not just be from staffing, it might be across the system and something else that we really need to dig. And we are dedicated to do that. If I know that our leaders can do what they need to do in their schools and our teachers can teach and our kids are ready to learn, then we're ready to dig away to see where we can make some cuts. Yeah, I know where we were going. We will. I promise. It's a promise of the promise of merger.
Promise squared.
Promise squared.
Diane.
Okay. I'm reading materials in the last couple of days about something being stated in them that said they were hiring, with a desire to hire five, or not five, but eight full-time.
It's a total of eight positions. We already have three.
Okay, all right.
So, it's five.
Five additional.
So, we can do this a couple of different ways. And one of my thoughts is that we might make the decision right now about these five positions. We'll have some choices later on about exactly how to pay for them. But if we're ready to say that these five positions should be added, we could do that now. If you're not comfortable doing this piecemeal, then say so. I just think it would be helpful if I at least had a sense of where people are at.
I thought I should mention, I had an email from Patrick, because congratulating him on his win for the select board. And he mentioned that he was in favor of adding the five staff members. So, that, I think that's important for the board to know how he feels about the five added staff members.
So, let me ask the question this way. Is there anyone who at this point in our discussion, and we can revisit it before the end of the page, is there anyone who is at this point not in favor of adding these five positions?
I just had one question. Does that include the administrator?
No.
No, okay.
Okay.
It's not about the funding source, though. It's about the concept.
Well, right.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. All right. That's one piece done, Kelly.
I guess I just wanted to reiterate that I hope that we're going to be very clear about expectations and evaluating the success of this initiative, because to me, it would have made more sense to add like one or two at a time. So, I think we have to be prepared to step back in a couple of years if it seems like this isn't delivering the level of change that we expected to.
Yes. I think that student outcomes, this piece are the piece that we should be asking to see.
And we discussed in the original proposal, I think Beth, you know, committed that there would be a series of determinations of what those outcomes are, assessments in which we can measure them, and that we have a really short runway because we start budgeting again in December. So, we need to, you know, we're not going to change the world, obviously, from September, December, but we need to be measuring something that tells us the efficacy of the positions and is it working in the right way.
It'll probably take till into the second year.
Right. I would understand a two-year leap of faith.
And you said, I don't think so.
So, student outcomes definitely, but also the savings piece. And I'm sorry, I can't remember. Is, are you imagining that you'll be able to identify savings within one budget cycle? Or are we talking about a couple of budget cycles to find the savings that will essentially result in a net?
Our intention was the, within the one budget cycle. Otherwise, with the fund balance going away, or I can't imagine us having, you know, the same level of fund balance, it's the cliff. So, we have to have those hard commitments to do that, as well as some of the one-time costs that we know are built into our maintenance that I've covered in some different writings to the board, so.
Okay. I need to move on to the leadership innovation proposal.
So, this proposal would be a co-principal, it is to have a co-principal, three, at Essex Elementary and Founders. The staff ratios that we sent you, it shows you how many students and staff numbers per administrator. And I think if you only look at the numbers, those schools definitely jump out as something that needs help, especially what, you know, when we look at Essex Elementary with, I can't see from here, and how many staff members alone to supervise and evaluate. And then, can you go back to the other one? Sorry, I jumped to that. But, so in dividing up the roles, as you asked, we did not purposefully put names over Principal A and Principal C. Those two, one principal would be the main contact for Essex Elementary. We're thinking at this point in time, it would be Peter and co-principal C for Cobb at FMS. And that is, if we find a person that can fill and has the strengths for the Principal B. I know from working with these two amazing administrators, that they could pick up any one of those roles and be strong. But in looking at their passions and their strengths at this point, to put those roles to them, they've divided up the supervision and evaluation. We wanted to make sure this Principal B that would be hired is not an assistant principal role. It is doing some supervision and evaluation. It's taking on some pretty big tasks as we look at tier two and tier three needs for students in the behavior. And then, Principal C takes on the lead with tier two and tier three with that, the multi-systems of support. That doesn't mean that Principal C will only do that. It really is that that person is taking the lead in that and working with special educators and parents. But all of them would be looking at that and being across both schools and seeing that and being in classrooms so that there is consistency with all of them. We do have the lead, again, the lead people for each of the buildings. So, that's your main contact person for teachers and parents. They've already talked about how their kindergarten night will be, all three of them, and how open houses, ice cream socials, all three of them, so that parents and teachers are really clear that it's three leading, but they'll have a main contact person to go to. The, in the middle of the circle, the things that they will all work on, that's being an instructional leader. If you put those topics in that middle, having an effective instruction in all areas across the school, that's being an instructional leader. Some of the things that I've worked with all the principals actually on for, since I've been here, is them, as you know, them being, if I'm there and we're talking about instruction, it's usually they're pulled away to do something with social and emotional learning on a behavior issue or something to do with an IEP or it's constant. So, this, managing this many students and staff allows a one principal at a time at least, to be really focused in on instruction. I can give the example, if Peter is working with a first grade team and he's looking at assessments, one principal could be in one building and the other in the other building. And that would allow Peter at that time to really be working with staff. And the same with Wendy. If she's working with staff, Peter and the other principal can be available for those other emergency kind of things that come up. Just as in our other schools, there's, in smaller schools, as Dan, he works with, closely with his guidance counselor in that way. So, do you two want to speak to any more? Or do we want to go to questions?
One of the things that we realized, the more we discussed this, was that we sort of came up with the notion that we're going to have to become scheduling ninjas. Because to, for each of the three people to fulfill that educational leadership role and to be in the classrooms doing the observations and spearheading the sort of more behind-the-scenes, there needs to be, there needs to be a person in each building who can be there to put out whatever the fires are. And they're not always, they're not always behavioral, social, emotional. It could be.
Flood in the bathroom.
A flood in the bathroom.
For example.
DCF, say that there's, you know, somebody's coming. There could be something wrong with your playground.
For example.
Just for example.
But any, and so, in order to, in order to allow, we, in order to allow, we would need to prioritize, like every single day that we're working, we would need to be prioritizing as a trio, what is the main thing that has to happen today? And if it's my observa, my set of observations with a teacher, that, or a series of teachers, then Principal B or C is in EES, Principal B or C is at Founders, and I am doing those observations, not being called away, not walking down the hall in order to have the meeting and being called away before I get to the classroom. Same thing with, at Founders, same thing with Principal B. It becomes a really sort of a scheduling marathon on a weekly basis.
I also think about, and the DMG report and all the recommendations coming from those two things alone. And in looking at Principal C, which we've talked about, would probably be me. I've got 12 years of special ed experience and that's an area that I have felt like, you know, I need to know how are paraeducators being utilized in my building? What does instruction look like for kids who are receiving specialized instruction? Are kids being pulled from core instruction in the classroom? In order for me to really be able to, Peter and I both, really to be able to monitor what's happening, how are we supporting kids? How are we making IEP decisions? Are we consistent in terms of that decision-making across pre-K five system, right? There's a lot of inconsistencies. And to be able to really work on those things efficiently and effectively, it's just simply nearly impossible with the buildings of our size. To be able to really focus in on that special ed piece, the EST process, is it consistent across both of our buildings? How are we deciding who needs support and who doesn't? And what's our entrance criteria for kids and exit criteria for kiddos who are receiving services? Are there intervention blocks set up across all of our building? And what do those look like? You know, are we monitoring progress of kids? There's so many little variables that as we, the more we talk about it, the more we realize what we might be missing with the size of our building and really just doing a lot of it. Doesn't mean we're not doing good work in our buildings. We are. And we work really closely together all the time. Like I said, we have the whole year already planned out with trauma trainer next year, and we're excited about that. And we'll continue to do that regardless of where we go with this. But we're telling you, we need that support for us to really do this job well and effectively so that all of our kids can be successful.
So, before I ask for questions and comments, I just want to say thank you for delineating this in a way that the board asked for at the last meeting. So, questions and comments, Brendan?
So, pre-merger, I served on the Essex Town School Board and for a time as the chair and also had two, all three of my kiddos go through those schools. And I remember there was a big challenge in kids moving from the elementary school to Founders. There was a, it was a very difficult shift for kids. So, I guess my question is, is that still a thing? And if it is, is this co-leadership model something that could help make that a better transition for students?
That's a great question. I'll answer, and I'm sure you'll want to talk about that as well. I think socially and emotionally, yes, that is still a thing. It is very challenging for kiddos. And I would say all kids to a certain degree, right? Level of anxiety and a little bit of fear, going to the big school with the two floors and there's some of that. But yeah, there's an adjustment for kids and it really, there is still some inconsistencies, right, from second to third grade. And so, this would absolutely help smooth that transition out because they would want to know all three principals from pre-K on. And not only are the principals, the people, they would, the systems would be the same. We're not there yet. We do a pretty good job of trying to make that happen, but it's still challenging. This could help us get there, definitely.
And I agree. I think it has always, I have always seen it as a challenge to have children come in at kindergarten and leave at second grade. They, for some of, for some of the kids, it takes a good year to just sort of get their feet underneath them. And then they've got a year and then they have, you know, they're really solid. And then there's a year of kind of worrying. And, you know, this change is coming. And that impacts children differently. And it impacts parents differently. And then the two can feed off of each other. I'm not sure there's, that that will be entirely dissipated ever. But we have worked very intentionally over the last several years to create, at least create the curriculum and the sort of broad systems so that it's not like landing on another planet. It, we're both working really hard at responsive classroom. We have both, we agreed that neither school would adopt Bridges Math program. If we didn't both adopt Bridges Math, it made absolutely no sense for children to have Bridges Math, K through second grade, and then not have it, three to five. And it made no more sense to go the other way. So, in those big broad areas, we have really attempted to streamline the transition for kids and for parents. This, again, allows us, because it allows us, it gives us the space and the time to really focus on responsive classroom across two schools, not sort of focus on responsive classroom in two schools because we're running around SEL, MTSS, all of those things. And that's, I think, one of the, one of the great powers of doing this particular exercise was in seeing, how is that going to look? Look at MTSS across the buildings. That becomes, when we make that seamless, it's better for everybody. Responsive classroom, we're making certain that there are, the training at both buildings is up to a certain level. The practice is up to a certain level at both buildings. That has a direct impact on all kids moving from one building to another.
I guess initially, when this was first proposed, it was under the mindset that was two principals in and an assistant principal. But this model suggests three principals over two schools. And with that in mind, it's shared leadership and not, not one's going to be in charge of any school other than its shared leadership. That, and I guess with.
It's kind of exciting, right? But it's, and it's, it's exciting for us.
Well, I understand that, but actually, I wasn't finished. With that in mind, I think this is going to be probably confusing to the parents as to who do we go to for issues? Because we used to go to Mr. Smith, now we go to Mrs. Smith, now Mr. Jones. And I, that's what I also want to understand is, how is this going to be shared, given the fact that it's shared? Given the fact that it's shared leadership, uh, over, it used to be a leader per school. Now it's three leaders that are going to be equally seated over two schools.
So there's one, um, Principal A is the main contact person for teachers and parents for Essex Elementary.
Okay.
If you jump across to the other one, Principal C is the main contact person for teachers and parents at Founders. It doesn't mean that Principal B will never talk to a parent because of the work that they do. But if you have a question, you go to those people at that school.
We would be the primary contacts.
Okay.
Apparently, so for instance, uh, coming up at the end of this month, we have our, our kindergarten parent night. When we have I speak, our nurses, our guidance folks, we talk about the lunch, just sort of give a broad overview and a welcome to the building. Wendy's going to join us this time as part of, and this is the principal that your children will be going to in a few years. Just to begin to make that connection for parents. It will still be me sort of emceeing or master of ceremonies of the, of the conversation. I will still be the person that they call when, you know, what do I do about A, B, C, and D? And I either respond immediately or I say, I need to look into that and then speak with the principal whose sort of milieu that falls under. And then return to, to answer questions.
Mark.
Some questions I have. I think this model would have been easier to understand if we'd had it in advance of tonight. So we would have had more time.
We did.
We did.
This, this was.
This, yes. I just think it's the timing that was shocking of what we were told about with six hundred and thirty-five thousand and adding staff. It was the timing of it. I'm not on the board next year and I'm a very blunt person. So I will say if I was on the board next year, I would want the board at our retreat in the summer to make some conditions on the superintendent that in the budget process, if there's any major changes, that they come before the start of budget. A heads up so that we're thinking and things are brought to us sooner. I know we ended up having to do that when I was on the Prudential Committee because we'd get nailed at budget and then you're at each other and arguing. The other thing is when I toured Wendy's school and Peter's school, the year we were talking, merging. I wondered then how you handle the large school versus in the Junction. The principals are evaluating ten and eleven, maybe twelve teachers. I'm not sure, um, A D L and also E M S. So I know we've been talking about equity, not equality. But some other things I have to understand to approve this is how do we have an assistant principal at A D L with X amount of students, but we only have one principal at E M S? The dean of students, we find out today, doesn't have the licensing in the rating I'm doing. So there's some inconsistencies of how this came about. And knowing how evaluations of teachers, that model was changing. And I know even in the Junction, when we were at the Prudential Committee, we talked about how principals could get the evaluations done in a timely manner because of all the things that they had going on. So I'm kind of strange, but I would have approved this and would rather have seen two assistant principals come on board because of the number of students. I don't think the numbers of students in the Junction and the town are going to go down that much. So we had such a large fund balance, I could accept this more if there were two so that I think a little more evaluation of teachers could possibly happen. That's, that's my thought process and sorry, I'm long-winded.
I apologize for bringing you this information late.
And you should.
It is late. It's, I also, um, have been working really hard with this team and I do apologize, I'm sorry, it's late. If I start tomorrow on next year's, and I would do that, but it is what it is. I, I think having, what they came up with, instead of having two assistant principals, or actually what the team brought to me at one point. And having two assistant principals, they're being one fiscally responsible and asking for one co-principal. And they're thinking about it as a team. And then, and what they said to me, it's one school, two buildings. If we go with two assistant principals, they're not working to build that bridge. They're going to end up working with their assistant principal and they'll become further and further apart, no matter what, how, no matter how, how hard they try. I just think that the co-principal brings a teaming ability that is phenomenal and that they decided to go that route instead of two assistant principals. And I can speak to A D L and E M S. We really worked, um, we can only focus in on one thing at a time and we try to do everything, but we can't. And we really, um, this year have dedicated a lot of time to our reading and mathematics in the lower grades and thinking about a merger coming together and really focused in on K five. It's not that we ignored middle school or, or, um, the high school for that matter. But in looking at leadership models, we did, we had conversations. Kevin has a dean of students. Yes, he is not, um, a certified or a licensed administrator, but he acts like a quasi administrator. And he, I am able to talk to Kevin and watch his dean of students deal with a lot of the behaviors and they come to Kevin when they should go to a principal. Kevin actually gets into a lot of classrooms, a lot. I mean, he really is able to, the system that he has worked out with his dean of students. Is that the best? I don't know that yet because we haven't dove into that like we will this coming year. Jen, in working with an assistant principal, works as a team. She does a lot of the behavior. And Jen, as a principal, steps in when she needs to and they work together as a team on that. Her assistant principal is a licensed educator and is able to do some supervision and evaluation, which is great. They also, right now, we're on two different systems, which we do want to merge. So that even looking at that, there could be different numbers in the building on who you're really doing a formal evaluation on. When we have a new system, we will create a system that's doable. Kevin and Jen, I don't know if you want to speak to.
I was happy with it all being about the.
Never going to happen.
I agree, Beth, you did it right on the head. So there's lots of factors that, that make it work for Essex Middle School with the model that it is. We have a committed, the D D for the entire staff doing the training around that has certainly helped with common language around behaviors for students and expectations and teachers. Our evaluations system that was in Essex Town, which was a teacher growth model, is completely different than the model that's in the Essex Junction, which I find to be a lot more cumbersome and not as effective and much more time-consuming. Ours is much more working with teachers to have that, those conversations. Yeah, there, there's just little pieces in, that, that make it different. We also, I, I think Jen and I, I hope she feels the same, have a great working relationship. So in terms of having conversations about what we can get together and do, uh, we're working on that. Even as we, as we speak around looking at, uh, providing an alternative type education for our middle school students that are really finding it difficult to maintain within the, within the school. So we're working together as well as ours to, to, to build that, so.
And just to add from my perspective, um, having this opportunity where we have a position at A D L that is open. We absolutely need to, from my perspective, fill that position. And it makes so much more sense to me to fill that with a licensed administrator who is able to fulfill the responsibilities of that position. It's titled an assistant principal. Um, I'd love to also dive into that work next year around, there are many other titles by which we can call this person, this position. The, I'm a very collaborative leader, as Beth mentioned, and I love working with this team. And the person that I work with at A D L, I hope to have someone who will complement me. So we can continue to work on the goals we have for A D L and for E W S D as a whole. And I believe that moving in that direction of having to be another licensed administrator makes most sense for our district and for our students.
Other questions I have are just the breakdown. I'm trying to wrap my head around how a Principal A is, um, S and E classroom teachers, grades one through three. But over under Principal C, for instance, it's S and E classroom teacher grades four and five. S and E special educator grades pre-K through five. And then Principal B, it breaks down to S and E special area staff grades pre-K through five. The, um, S and E classroom teachers pre-K through K, then below, I'm sorry, grades pre-K through five and it's the specials. I'm still trying to wrap my head around how that's going to work. Splitting all the special educators to one person. I don't know, I'm just having a hard time.
Wish I was working on the call. So it, it, it doesn't make sense to you that, that one person doing supervision and evaluation for all the special educators makes more sense than dividing it up by school? Or one person doing all the phys ed teachers instead of dividing it up by school?
Trying to figure out, I guess, the time they're going to be in the schools and how they equate to covering it all.
I think that those, those are some of the greater details we need to dive into, right? In terms of how we schedule, if you talked about a little bit about it earlier, how do we schedule these observations? What does that look like? And we're going to have to be really efficient about it and, and dedicated to that time. So how are we observing classrooms? When are we observing classrooms on a regular basis? Who's doing what, when? I think that some of the nitty-gritty details, we, it's, it's, should this go forward? It's a lot of work and we, we recognize that. It really is, you know, shifting a lot of what we do and what we focus on as principals. So it would be, it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to be a long summer in planning this, but as we, because, and we realize that the more we talk about it, how much work it would be to, to get us there. But we haven't worked out all the, the finer details.
So I have, um, two, two sort of questions slash comments. The first is that we're looking at two proposals. The one to add the five, um, social and emotional learning specialists. And the other to add an additional principal, which based on this breakdown is, um, also occasioned by thinking about how social and emotional learning, among other things, is supported at these schools. And undertaking both of those proposals at the same time seems to me to make it impossible to track the specific effect of either undertaking. Because like if you were designing a scientific experiment to see, does having a S E L specialist in each school have an effect on student and teacher outcomes? Also doing another thing that has some effect on S E L outcomes at the same time will make it impossible to see which one is having an effect if either. So it could be that you end up with no apparent change in outcome because one thing had a big positive effect and the other actually made it harder for teachers to do, to do their job or something. And you won't see, those will balance each other out and you won't see a change. So to me, it would make more sense not to do two things that intend to have an effect on the same thing at the same time. If you want to be able to assess them. So that would be comment number one. My comment number two would be that I can definitely see how the student and teacher, two licensed administrators and licensed supervising administrators ratios are not balanced among our different, um, sort of legacy districts. But I feel like the approach that would make sense to me would be an evaluation of the entire district. Rather than adding more people at the highest level of compensation, looking for ways to pare down the number of overall instructional leaders and have more assistant principals over time. Like how when Ellen Thompson retired, like she had been doing great work in the district. But then we thought about creative ways to reallocate those duties because maybe a district with less than four thousand students doesn't need nine executive directors in the central office. Likewise, maybe with thirty-seven hundred students ratios in other comparable-sized districts and systems might not have fourteen licensed supervising administrators for that number of students. And maybe we can think creatively about how to share resources collaboratively across schools, but not necessarily by adding more principals at the highest level.
Well, one of the things I did look at at the beginning of this work and had conversations with district leaders was about, I looked at Champlain Valley's school district and thought, okay, so their numbers, um, per student is lower with special ed and the, the amount of money they spend on special ed. And so it really made me question like, what do they do? And we had that conversation. One of the things they do have in each building is a special ed director. They have more administrators than we do per student. They don't necessarily have assist, they have bigger schools. So it's hard to do apple to apple, what that looks like. And that's what we started to get into. So they have a, um, is a three eight and a, I don't, I don't remember the configurations, but they have K eight systems too that are larger than our K eight system in Westford. So, and I've been studying this a lot because I have a daughter that works in the middle school there. So I've been like really listening, like how do they do the special ed? What is different?
I guess I would just say, can we look outside Vermont? Because.
Yeah.
Vermont has a tradition of very small schools and very high staffing ratios and, or low, whatever.
I do think, yeah.
If we want to examine what sort of efficiencies we can get now that we're a slightly larger district, we might have to look outside Vermont.
I agree. And I think part of your, um, if you want to call it the, your science experiment or, I have been doing my own science experiment, experiment while I've been in schools and watched each leader efficiently lead their schools in amazing ways. What I found is in social and emotional learning, it's when they're pulled the most and that's what they're dealing with. If we can support them in that and when you look at the amount of, um, supervision evaluation that the larger schools have to do, that's where I found the needs are. It is an experiment, absolutely, and I wouldn't go any other way with it. I, I believe, I've been in education for a long time as a teacher and a math coach and a curriculum person. I think that this structure that we're putting into place is absolutely best for kids. I am, um, really proud of the work that they do and how innovative and thinking that we are, we're doing. I feel like this district is ahead of our surrounding ones. I, we do look at staff ratios to kids, um, across Vermont. It's harder to move to Massachusetts because they do have bigger schools. They don't have our small schools. So that's hard to figure out what is best. I feel like this, if we can, um, do a really good job with these two schools and think about it being one school. We do have Junction schools, absolutely. I mean, um, and Dan and Suzanne talk all the. I mean, and Dan and Suzanne talk all the time. They're right down the road from each other. Hiawatha, I feel, is a little further out, and then Westford's out. I mean, we had that conversation today. We cannot be fair across, or we can try to be fair across, but we're really looking at equity. And we have to look at the students at each of the schools. We know that Westford, we want to put a full-time social and emotional leader out there. Does it make sense when, with the size of number of kids she has and you compare to, we want to put one at EES? Well, the numbers don't match up, but we know that that's needed. And the amount of time that that person would spend on the road if we shared it is not going to accomplish anything. I, I appreciate your thinking. And if we do one and the other, we won't know. We, we will know what's working. We will have systems in place. And I will be working closely with those three administrators to see how it's working. It might be absolutely amazing. And then we come to you and say, you know what? I think we need to build two K five schools because it's working so well in that building. What would it look like? Let's be really innovative. Let's think down the road. What do we need for kids? We know transitions aren't good for kids. That's what this is trying to help with. Suzanne and Dan, I feel like they already do that because they're walking distance. But then we have Hiawatha, that's, that's not a walking distance. We have to figure that out. This is a step in the right direction. Oh, stop.
Do either of you want to add anything to respond to you? Other, Diane?
I guess I have the rare privilege of remembering when there was one principal before both Summit and Fleming. So Dan, if you can imagine being the only principal over there. I remember that because my daughter experienced that. Having suddenly going from one principal to the next at that point in time, where it had been, had been one. So if you want to go back to an example of where it worked, well, yeah, 30 some years ago. Okay, that experiment was done and I think it worked. Okay. But Dan, you can, you can tell me, how would you imagine having Summit Street too? It's a, so I would say, yeah, okay, I'm all for experiments. I have a little voter experiment going on right now. As to, Natasha's been helpful. She's only gotten halfway. So I've got to fill in some more blanks. It's, I think it's going to be best for the kids. I don't look at it as being a science experiment, although technically I guess it is. But I think getting the kids, the equity pieces of the social emotional, having principals there. I, I give you kudos for what you do as a team effort. And by the way, I got a team effort for my dental. So I don't see the same dentist when I get there. But you know what? The care was great. Doesn't matter how many different dentists are sitting there. Each one, when I get in there, does their job and it's been wonderful. So, you know, that's painful sometimes, by the way. But, you know, but I have confidence in them, like I have confidence in you guys. So, and it's just as important to me as, by the way, you know, having my teeth for our kids. So, because somebody's got to pay my social security. So, it's a, I, I don't think we want to shortchange these kids. We've talked about equity. We've agreed to equity. I realize there's cost. I have debated the experiment of having a 10-month principal. I've experienced some of those in the past. You know, I don't know, I'm in it, doing this education thing for a while. And so I, I think having a 12-month principal would aid the team, not having a 10. Yes, I realize there's a cost savings. But I think sometimes we've got to invest. Keep telling me that they're not expenditures, they're investments. So I'll use that word. We're investing in equity. So we say we need these social things. We say we need educational pieces, so let's step up to it. Okay, I've had interesting conversations with Patrick. He and I have spent the last day at the polls because we've had that lovely opportunity. And yes, Patrick, I know you're watching. So he told me he was going to. I was waiting for the text.
He's texting me right now, I have his.
There you go, yes, hi Patrick. So, you know, but, you know, it's lovely when you get 20 hours to spend with somebody. So, it's one of these cases where I think we've really got to pony up. Okay, I've got the data. Thank you very much. You gave me the chart I was looking for. And yes, it's got math in the back. You know, it's, you know, and yes, there are people out there that are going to say, Diane, you haven't ponied up. Well, you know what? Here you go, Todd, I'm doing it. So, but it's a, I, I think we've got to step up. Yes, I do want to see the promise as a merger. And one of those was we were going to do the best care we could do for our students. That was one of the promises. We were going to do the best for all of our students. So to me, this gives the best chance for our kids and our staff to function as best we can. So let's do it.
Kim?
I am really appreciative of the flow chart or layout that you've described. I can envision it so much better than I could as an ideal. So I'm really grateful. I appreciate seeing there be main contact for each building. I think that strikes me as something parents will benefit from. I had the privilege of watching you guys grow together as a professional leadership team. And I know how well our principals really do work together. And that doesn't solve the challenge of the numbers of individuals you're supervising and trying to be educational leaders for. So I feel really comfortable with this idea. And I do expect that we'll be finding what the accountability markers are and, and hearing about those, you know, regularly and hearing honesty back from you all on how that's working. I was thinking about the dual variable experiment and thinking that we will have other buildings that will have had no change. And they will have just had.
But they're having the SEL.
Yes, so they will, they will be our control on the impact of SEL and somewhat of a control on how we can see what's happening with a third principal, co-principal trying to not very cleanly isolate the impact. So I, I appreciate and had that similar concern last time we had this conversation when I couldn't picture what this would be and felt as though I couldn't envision who we're hiring for to figure this out. I see it differently now and I appreciate the need to move forward. Very grateful for Brendan's reflection on the transitions of families from building to building. Love that you guys are going to be meeting kindergarten parents together. That doesn't surprise me at all. I knew you would do that regardless. I just, I think that was a great reflection, Brendan, because it was a sort of a perennial thing that we knew. The littlest of littlest, we're seeing transitions quicker than we probably like and struggling with that transition always. Third grade was hard. So thank you for your work on it. Thank you for thinking creatively around it. Thank you for helping us see your thinking a little more fleshed out to feel like it's a little bit less of a leap of faith than it is a step in support of, I think, what needs to happen from a leadership standpoint, even if it looks different than we've ever seen before. Like, there needed to be something happening. We wouldn't have necessarily thought of this, so thank you.
So Patrick says, hi Diane.
Emoji?
I didn't get an emoji. His comment is that he would prefer that the finer details were worked out and brought to us next year and could be approved next year or not. The statement, we have a lot to work out, still leaves him with tremendous hesitation. I don't feel the same way. So my comment now is me, and I really appreciate the innovation piece, the way that you're looking at this and trying to deliver it in a way that makes sense, not in the way that we're used to. That's something that I think is really important if we're going to make these changes that we know we need to make. We have got to start doing these things that feel different. And then we, as the board and as, need to do our job about, and the administration, of communicating those changes to our families and making sure that we're available for questions and answers. So I applaud the effort and I agree with Kim that seeing it fleshed out makes me feel comfortable with it. And I really do appreciate that, that effort to do something different.
Other comments or questions?
Well, thank you, Martha. You know, when I first looked at this proposal, I was a little concerned because I've worked in a lot of organizations and for a lot of managers and supervisors. I think the main thing that I've gotten from listening has been, this is probably on one dimension, a span of control. How many people can call upon you to handle that one problem at any given moment? So I see this in terms of not only support of children, but also in support of staff. And this has to, and the person that is chosen for this position has really got to be collaborative and working all together. This has to be very focused. I think the piece that I'm still going to be looking for in the standards has to do with evaluation. And who will make that final evaluation? I've worked in a lot of organizations where evaluations are done at two levels with two supervisors. And that really ensures a check and balance. But I, I'm not sure how you look at it that way. But I think this is an opportunity to really focus the organization on what's important for, for kids. So it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Kim?
I just, I appreciated also hearing from Jen and Kevin to understand sort of the different applications. I do think looking at our structures as we go through this and, and hopefully sooner rather than later, get to a consistent supervision and evaluation model. And, and seeking sort of best practice and learning together and figuring that out starts to have sort of job titles look more similar, like have a consistency that we can understand better. And so I appreciate both of you sharing each of your perspectives and how those roles are served. And look forward to hearing more about that as we go through the coming year or two to find a little more consistency. But thank you both very much for illuminating that piece as well.
Grace?
The first one is, like, have you guys, like, thought of someone who might be good for, like, this position? Position, like, position B? And then like what would happen, I guess, like if, if we, if we voted, if you, if you guys voted yes, but then you guys couldn't find someone, like what would happen? Oh, if, if like the board voted yes, but then you guys couldn't find someone, like what would happen to the money? Which might be more of a board thing.
So we'll have to go through posting the position. And we will do that. I have faith they're going to find somebody because people want to come work for Essex, which is an awesome place to be. So I, I feel like we're going to find somebody really strong. I've also said to them, who knows, somebody might even in the district want to move around, right? So, I don't know, it's a pretty exciting.
We would want to work with, definitely someone that's collaborative, similar to what Dan just said. You know, someone that complements us in that, you know, we're all going to have different strengths. You know, so how, we're really thinking more around the type of person that we want. I mean, certainly we have people in mind that we've attended Waddington Leadership Program with. We said, ooh, that person might be really good. So obviously we'll be posted and interviewed and we'll talk about that process. But yeah, we have in mind the kind of leader we would want to work with.
Okay. And then secondly, I'm kind of going to agree with Patrick here about just waiting. I think for like some parents, this like social emotional thing is kind of a new thing. Like, I think for my parents it would be, just because people like think like school is for like, just like academic learning, like, just like leave your problems outside the door. So I almost feel like if we add this on, people who are voting for this might be very confused. And I feel like if we take it like a little bit slower, which usually I'm not a big fan of, we can like show, like after a year, because we had like SELs, like this is, like, we have data to show like that this is good. And then we can convince people that having a co-principal would also be good. So that's just kind of my thought about that. So, yeah.
Other questions and comments? So I'll just add a sort of summarizing comment, I guess. I hear the comments about waiting. I think the most powerful piece for me in terms of feeling that we should not wait is that we have a big equity in terms of leadership. These two large population buildings, which means larger staff buildings. And I don't think it's good for kids because the staff probably isn't getting the supervision and evaluation that they need. And that's how instruction probes and that's how things get better for children. I think in terms of Grace's comment to how social and emotional learning, if I understand the proposal correctly, those new positions are going to work more directly with the teachers than they are with students. So I don't see parents as having a ton of interaction with that stuff, unless it's an individual student who needs a plan. If you're thinking more about more emphasis on social emotional learning as a parent of grown children and a grandparent of children, having things happening in schools that create better atmospheres in which all students can learn is a really good thing. And I hear a lot of comments these days about the fact that there are a number of students in our schools who have troubled lives. And they, they're not only struggling to learn, but they're making it harder for other students to learn. And so for all those reasons, I think both of the proposals that have been brought forward are important. Do I wish the timing had been different? Yes, I absolutely do. And would it have felt a little bit different if it hadn't snowed on the 12th? Maybe. But it does still feel late in the process. So I think if everyone, we can't change that, as Beth said. So I think if everybody can think about that for the future, it would be helpful. So are we, I'd like to do the same thing I did for the SEL positions with this proposal. And this is not talking about the funding yet, but just are there people who do not, I'm going to ask it this way, who do not feel that we should move forward with the proposal to add a co-principal for founders and Essex Alimentary?
Can I just say something? I think, and it's largely because of the timing. I probably, given six months, would understand this better. I feel a cognitive dissonance trying to support both of these proposals at the same time. Because one is talking about putting people building by building to make a change and the other is talking about changing things away from a building by building perspective. So it doesn't make any sense to me to support both of these in the same year rather than decoupling them and seeing how one of them goes. And I feel like I've heard more general consensus around the. And I feel like I've heard more general consensus around the SELs. That's why I was like, okay, we can do that one. But I can't at the same time support the second one.
There. Do you want to make any comment that would be different?
No, I think the timing, I think I need, I'm one of those type of people. I need more time to digest it. And I think I'm looking for more details than what we have. And I apologize for standing up. I'm not ignoring your pain through my back, my knees.
At least I can see you today. Okay, well, let's move forward. Oh, sorry. Oh, Todd, I'm sorry.
Before we get to the numbers, I just had a question and a comment in. Where are the five SELs supposed to go to which schools?
So we already have three that are split amongst the schools now that mainly focus on behavior, writing behavior plans and working with really high tent, the high like tier three needs. So our hope is to then have leaders, social and emotional leaders, that would do some of that plus some work with coaching, um, teachers and working with our staff and training and how to deal with that even in tier one. What are the buttons that we don't want to push for certain kids, right? Or all kids and making everybody really feel ready to learn. So these positions would be eight positions across the district. We want those three people, but so we would be hiring five more. So I don't, I can't say we're the three people we have now will go. And I think that's some work that we have to do. We did discuss as a leadership team in hiring these eight people, we would all hire them together and figure out the best fit for the personality or skills that they have and the skills that are already in school. So it wouldn't be like, um, you know, Dan wouldn't be going out and hiring one for Fleming and somebody, you know, Suzanne doing her own for Summit. But we'd really do that as a team. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so that, it just leads me to wonder if, it sounds like the five SELs and the co-principal is the ideal situation. So is there perhaps something that's better than what we currently have? That isn't ideal where maybe you add three SELs into the budget and the co-principal, kind of see how things go for a year. And you have a year to kind of ruminate on, do we add two more in the next year? Or maybe it's three, maybe do two co-principals in this budget.
Yeah, we, we discussed that too. Dylan, do you want to talk about that?
I mean, we played, we, we discussed several different models. I think where the leadership landed was that by moving to eight FTEs with eight schools, pre-K eight, that gives us on average one FTE, one dedicated FTE per building and feeling like that. The benefits of that work are important. And it was worth the investment to start off that way versus starting off with part of what we needed and not getting the full benefit. I also think it's important to note this, while the third co-principal at the schools is helping to address SEL, that wasn't the only or main focus or reason for that either. So there, it certainly will help support SEL, but it's, it's also in relation to what you said around supporting staff with instruction and supporting, you know, instructional leaders in a lot of different ways. And so I don't want to confound this too by saying, well, we could do one and enhance the other.
Yeah.
Because they're not, it's a bit, they're both fruit, but they're apples and oranges, right? So they, they have some overlap in their purpose, but they're not identical in their purpose.
Are you finished? Okay, thanks. Kim?
And that just also caused me to think about one of the pieces that I think Dylan had shared and Beth as well, that that SEL in the building would be developing relationship and providing capacity building in the classroom teachers. And I think imagining that as someone who's part of the culture, I can envision that happening more quickly with more efficacy than it might if fractionally spread around for parts of buildings. But I was just, that caused me to think about that other piece that they had mentioned of the responsibilities of that person.
Martha? Perhaps for that as well. I feel like having the capacity for building allows for the tier one impacts results, but it also allows for crisis response, which impacts every single kid in every single building multiple times. I feel like we have quite a lot of data on that. And we know the impact that it has for kids aren't available to learn when they're not even present in the classroom because of that or when other children aren't present in the classroom because they evacuated the classroom or a full inclusive district and that's the only way they should be. And in order to meet those needs, we have to have someone other than the principal responding to that. And we're the last resort, and there's one of us. And a decision about a co-principal model, while it impacts, the leadership impacts every aspect of your building, the social emotional piece impacts every kid and how it just came.
Kim?
So I guess just to, I, this is bringing up to me some more of why I feel it's like a cognitive dissonance between the two proposals. That if we've identified that there's an inequity in having three administrators for K through five in the junction and two administrators in K through five in the town, which actually has more students, then why are we going to a model that will have three SELs for K through five in the junction and two SELs for K through five in the town, which actually has more students?
It's, we, it's per building.
Right. Which we've determined is inequitable as regards administrators. Why would we then be doing student support in an inequitable manner?
It's, yeah, I, I think I can understand the need to look at the two parallel lines and try to continue to bring them together. But, you know, from the beginning, we talked about that we are rightfully pushing in towards social emotional learning. And we're doing so by creating a cohort across K eight so that they can be a PLC and work both on the tier three, but also the tier one and work together to change culture. And we have a leadership innovation that is trying to work towards instructional excellence. And that innovation is at a $91,000 savings opposed to the traditional building-based model where we'd have two assistant principals. And I think one of the things that is an anecdote on a cultural basis is the principals that are involved calling out the fact that it just wouldn't be financially responsible to look at a model of two assistant principals when we feel the innovation opportunities of a co-principalship with three can mean so much more. I don't recall any time being an administrator in the past or even a school board member where I was hearing principals specifically calling out fiscal responsibility in looking at programming. I'm sure they weren't ignoring it, but that's evidence that our culture has moved down to being a team and recognizing we have a promise of merger. We have to save money, but we also have to be effective and at work. So these are two different discrete proposals. The timing perhaps has gotten people so that they continue to move them together. And we apologize and commit to changing that timing in the future. But, you know, it, the right thing is coming at, at a time where it's short to understand it and believe in it, but it's still the right thing. It's a leadership innovation to expand upon our instructional excellence. And it's an investment in social emotional learning so that we can change this. And as Kevin said, so we can start to put those systems and structures to place because we've been talking about this for a long time.
I guess I'm just saying, what if the right thing is six SELs? So that we have nine across the system because we've determined that it's inequitable to do things building-based, town and village next to each other.
And it, it wouldn't be an extraordinary difference from our history to learn more, to reassess and to change the course of path.
Kim?
I, I don't want to get this wrong or put words in your mouths, but I do remember hearing that there are some other supports in place in your buildings currently that you use to help with behavior that may not be called an SEL. And that given the large population in your buildings, you are jerry-rigging currently to manage. And so similar to there being different titles and responsibilities in ADL and EMS, I feel like one of our conversations, I'm recalling that while the numbers don't bear out as equitably and maybe next year there is another request to balance those numbers differently. I thought that I had heard that you guys might have other people trying to serve fractions of parts of that work now while you don't have somebody.
When we moved away from assistant principals, which was...
I was talking about SEL, I don't, if that, if, just in case I wasn't clear. Okay. Oh, got it. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Even I'm confused now.
In 2010 or 11, I think it was. What?
It was before the gray hair.
Yeah. We had, there were, we had a couple of years where there, there was nobody. It was, it was principals. And what we found was that we were, you were, you were putting out one fire and there was nobody to respond to the two or three others that might be happening. And so guidance was being pulled and special educators were being pulled. And God forbid that the principal was there in the building for a day and everything was running. So we, we came up with the Student Management Specialist Position, which is a crisis response and working on, working with teachers to create plans. But it's those plans, and again, it's all crisis-based. It is all responding. It is all reactive. The plans themselves, yes, they are proactive planning, but it is not proactive planning that, that affects students across the board. It is not a tier one in any way, shape or form plan which the SEL provides. The, the additional prince, the, the, the co-principal again allows us to focus on the instructional leadership aspects of being a principal. When we have that, that scheduling monster sort of wrestled down so that we know that on Tuesdays, this is what's, this is the priority. And those other fires are being addressed. And the tier one social emotional learning of kids across the board is also being addressed in the capacity building.
Okay. I think I'm going to have to ask that we move on. We have the straw, but I'm happy. We have a number of other decisions to make tonight. So, um, thanks for that discussion. Brian, Beth, have you, are you dismissing the principles? Yeah, all right. Thank you all for... Of course you love them. Okay. So it looks like we're at fund balance, right?
Is... So I, I guess why don't I lay out what the recommendation has been with fund balance? And then maybe there can be a straw poll when, on that recommendation. So the recommendation has been to use carryover fund balance to offset the cost of the SEL system and support additions, which would be, um, hold on. Forgotten the number that I... But just the discreetly, that first one is... Four, four ninety, five hundred. So that's 490,000 for that offset. The, um, leadership innovation is 145,000 for that offset. And the remaining portion would be 375,000. That would be asked, asking the voters to assign that $375,000 to the, to fund the repair and capital expense fund.
Excuse me, Brian, I didn't hear the third number.
375. It's the balance, so it all adds up to 1 million. It should add up to 1 million.
And Brian, the repair and capital expense fund, uh, 375 would be designated for...
I have $10,000 off. It's 360, uh, 365,000 if I just did my math right. It would, it would go into the capital, it would go into that repair and capital expense fund. And the board has also a recommendation to pursue a long-range facility planning study, which would need funding. And it's the recommendation to then use what's in the, in that capital fund to fund the study.
So questions, comments?
Refresh my memory on how large a fund balance we've come in with this year.
4.2 million?
4.2 million and we've put how many into this budget?
In the original recommendation, it was 3.2 million.
Okay. And that's all money that's been audited?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
We're just, we have the bound audits. We're just waiting to have those presented to the board when we stop budget sessions.
Are we looking, um, okay to get through the rest of this year? Do you think we'll have more fund ballots next year from this year?
Um, I think we are looking okay to, to get through this year. Again, we have that situation in which we had dollars reserved and, and allocated towards transportation. And we haven't expanded it. And, and I do feel that we'll continue to run a reasonable fund balance every year just because that's a pretty wise thing to do.
Yes, safe.
Yeah. And in our budget right now, you know, fund balance, a lot of times is coming from the personnel side. As we program, you know, we have a thousand employees. We have a natural turnover, so we're doing new hires. And when we do new hires, we estimate that people are going to come in and require two-person plans. So, and a little heavy on a two-person plan. So we can cover family, but also we get singles. And then we also have turnover in the middle of the year with their savings. So, you know, we typically will be running some fund balance. I don't, I can't imagine, I mean, I know why we ran a 4.2 and those events just don't keep reoccurring. I mean, the biggest event was we negotiated a new health plan and our healthcare costs were dramatically less than budget.
The, so we have a couple of unknowns. Transportation, how much that's going to incur this coming year to try to solve things. And the other unknown is we're in the middle of negotiations.
Yes. And we're moving towards the first time ever of negotiating a statewide level health insurance.
Not in this kind of act for the next moving forward.
Yeah, so it's a big unknown going forward.
But that's...
I think the answer is that all those things have been planned for and taken into account in the budget proposal. Yeah.
Yeah, just trying to get my head wrapped around it.
Going through it. Kim?
Um, if I have a question about what we call that capital fund in the warning, will that come up when we talk about the warning rather than now?
Yeah, I just recently adopted what the language was from the first annual meeting. I'd always been calling it the capital fund.
Because in last year's warning that we signed, it looks like it was the capital reserve fund.
I don't think we referred to that first meeting's...
Creation?
Yeah, that, that creation of wording. I figured since it was in the minutes, we should either be intentional about changing the name or try to get back to the allegiance of that name.
So sorry.
Any other questions or comments on the fund balance strategy?
One question about the long-term plan. In your, in your view, Brian, what does that consist of? What's the scope of work?
Well, I, I would recommend that we take a look at that. There's a pretty established process. process for long-range facility planning. And it includes stakeholder engagement and executive committees, and it, it, it's pretty robust. It, it may be too robust for us, but I would, I would suggest that if the board does this, that it charge an initial group, like an executive committee or a, a key group, that would start to research methods. And then from that method, determine sort of a, an initial process and then start to bring more stakeholders into inform it. You know, what I've seen is that these can be, you know, where we look at places like South Burlington that's done it and some others. I think Burlington was one of the shortest ones that went in, and that was almost a year long in working with outside parties and internally. South Burlington has gone because it's also included, the whole visioning of their town center has been pretty extensive. So it kind of ranges into that. I think I suggested it was eighteen to twenty-four months long to, to come all the way out. And, and at that point, you're coming out with a really substantive plan that would potentially be like almost we were with one campus, you know, so that you're, that's your work product. You're coming out with something that is really been banged out, has details to it, costs, estimates, the beginning of taking a look at bonding costs or financing costs, the whole nine yards.
Got it. Okay, I'm okay on these items. I still have one thought about the transportation. I wish we had a solution for it, but...
Don't yell. Understand.
That was, that could be a piece of that planning as well.
Yeah, yes. Well, I think it, it, it may be wise, I mean, so facility, we can design what we want, but it may be smart to take a look at physical assets, so not just facilities, but also physical assets either on a durable life basis or on a, on a market value basis or a replacement value basis, because those are big.
Got it.
You know, I mean, I know it, it's not core to our life and it's in an enterprise fund, but you know, like Zambonis are not inexpensive.
No.
So you, you don't decide like you're going to go out and buy a natural gas Zamboni and just do it.
Right.
So I think there are items in which, and certainly school buses, if we're not leasing and purchasing, you know, those are, those are significant assets. So, yeah, it might be wise to took, take a look at rolling stock as well.
Okay. Got it.
Other comments?
Well, the last, the last question, were we going to try to defer some of that four hundred K through savings?
What four hundred K?
Oh, the planning. Or the long-term planning? Or is that...
The facility on this?
Some one-time expenditure.
One-time expenditure.
So we don't have to fulfill that.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on the fund balance strategy? Are folks comfortable?
Yeah.
So of the various scenarios presented, is the administration recommending one specific strategy here?
On the fund balance or on the various tax impacts?
They're connected, aren't they? I mean, so slide six is the one that, is that the recommendation of the administration? The one that uses the offset, offsets the...
It is, that's a portion of it, yeah. So that would, so the three point two million initially is in there.
Yeah.
And then the four hundred and ninety is in there with the five FTE, the one forty-five is in there with the co-principal. And then that would leave a balance of three sixty-five, and it would be the recommendation to use three sixty-five for what would be article, um, six?
Yep.
So we don't have any tax impact data on what that would affect?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
It's six. Is that right? Brendan, six?
Slide six, right.
Yeah. So this would be that tax impact. So it doesn't, because we're offsetting it, it changes none of our educational spending and without a change in our ed spending. Now also recognize, so there's, not to get too complicated here, but just to remind people of what's been said and also what's been sent to you, is that equalized pupils has a chance of growing some more even past a frozen number twelve, because we have that pre-K issue. So we can, our, that could grow another twenty students, which would then lower tax rates further. And as I communicated to you, we're also seeing some movement that if the, with the school budgets as they're coming in, we may see some softening of the yield and some increasing of the base rate and some increasing of the non-residential. So there's a lot in play. I think, you know, Martha, the, the chair suggested, let's stick with what we've got because we could do this on a daily basis, continue to sort of keep flexing and changing. But just know that there's an opportunity for this to drop more and then an opportunity on the reverse side for it to bump up through the yield and dollar raise.
Keely.
I recall in the past, we've tried to be aware of that there's like a ed spending pre-equalized pupil that becomes like a penalty zone. Can you remind me what that was last year and like, we're not anywhere near?
We're not anywhere near it, if I recall, and I can look it up as it, but I think it's, it's north of seventeen thousand. It ends up being sort of like a one-plus of our base Ed's, Ed grant.
Um, Keely.
Just in looking at slide six, would, in article seven, oh no, six, voters assign the, what was it, three hundred and something thousand?
Yep.
Fund balance to repair and capital expense fund established by the electorate. Is that represented here? I don't see that it's there.
No, so it's, it, it's a, it's a fund balance that you by statute either have to put into your revenues to decrease the tax impact or get voter approval. This is the voter approval and it has no impact on your ed spending.
And historically, we've always done it, that we were assigning it to a capital reserve and then that is, does have a statement that says this will affect the ed spending in this way.
Yes. Which is what we did, you know, back here when we were at, when the article was raising dollars to fund the transfer. And now what you're doing is you're asking for an assignment of the fund balance. So there's no...
So it's kosher to do it this way?
Yeah.
But not the way we've historically done it?
No, and, and it hasn't been the way historically, there was both Essex Town and U forty-six that did articles, and this is not like that. And this has gone through five versions with the board's counsel.
Okay.
And this is the way that a number of districts do do it.
Okay. Thank you.
When they have fund balance available, obviously.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So let me ask the question this way. Does anybody object to using the one million dollars in fund balance as is proposed?
You have one more question.
I, I just thought while you're on camera, I think it'd be very important for the public to know. I thought I read something in an email or a letter that someone was complimenting us on how well we are controlling things. I can't remember the whole status. I, I think that's important to know before we vote on the budget of...
Yeah.
How we are being affected as we stand against other districts.
Yeah, that's good. Let's just get through this fund balance, please.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll do the bigger budget conversation. Okay. So anyone object to using the one million dollars in fund balance? One million dollars of the fund balance as has been proposed?
Only the same reservations I had before around using one-time money and, and knowing that we in doing our job want to have updates on a sort of how it's going for you guys just because it sort of defies our normal instincts to use one-time money on recurring ongoing expenses. And you've heard that from us, so I...
Yeah.
I trust that. And I, I heard you all say it is counterintuitive to you but for this current situation and the intention of...
Yeah, it's very, eyes wide open. So I'm going to just change it just a little bit because I think it, it will help us with some of the accuracy. Let's think of it as that we have four point two million dollars of fund balance and the board's going to direct how we use that four point two. So that the board's going to direct that three point eight, three five million of it be used as offsetting revenue in the operating fund. That's the three point two that was in there before, the four ninety and the one forty-five. So then that way, the board takes that action to put that towards your operating fund. And that it will ask the voters to assign three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the, we've got to change the name of that because it just doesn't roll off the tongue. The cap, the capital fund, the repair and capital expense fund.
For her long-term facilities planning stuff. Okay. Let me, let's just ask her, are we comfortable with the...
We don't.
Okay. So now, Brian, let's go back and review where we're at with the whole budget. And let's go through the high-level numbers again, based on the decisions as we've made, that we've made as we've gotten along tonight. We would be looking for approval of a budget of eighty-one thousand four eighty-six, five fifty-five. I have my research.
Sounds nice. Eighty-one thousand sounds pretty nice.
That translates to education spending of sixty-one thousand four...
Sixty-one million.
Sixty-one million. Thank you. Four eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven, something like that. And we'll focus on the percentage increase for that number because that number is what drives tax rates. And that's one point eight eight percent. As Marla mentioned earlier, privately, the Department of Education has congratulated us on this number that we told them that we were looking at because the average increase across state for ed spending is closer to four.
Closer to four.
And that, this budget as we're looking at it right now would result in ed spending per equalized pupil of sixteen thousand, sixteen million. I can't...
No, sixteen thousand.
No, sixteen thousand.
I think we could do that.
Sixteen thousand.
Does each of my kids get Lamborghini? I'm excited about that.
Change. That's an increase of one point eight one percent.
Yes.
And again, the average increase in that number, oh, thank you, across the state is a little over four percent. So, yeah. So we're certainly not going to contribute to any increase in rates at the state. In fact, we'll help them be less than they otherwise would be. Brendan?
I think it's also worth noting that as of this afternoon, of the ninety-six school budgets that were acted on, only three have failed across the state. So the mood of the, I know every community is different, but the mood of the voters seems to be supportive of education despite the higher average that's been experienced elsewhere.
Thank you. Okay, so...
So Martha?
Yes.
The numbers you're talking about, that we are looking at adding the extra five FTEs and the one point O FTE for the principal.
The co-principal.
Yes. All those pieces, those pieces are included. So, any final questions or thoughts before we vote on the budget? Okay, so remind us that when we look at tax impacts, we are only voting on the budget. So I will undertake a motion that we approve of an FY twenty budget of eighty-one million four hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars.
So moved.
Thank you. Any further...
Any further discussion? If not, I'll lose in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Martha, we don't have to say the other parts of article five, the results in educational spending of...
We'll, we'll do that in the morning. Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the next thing we'll do is to approve the warning. Where did Brian go?
He went to prison.
Can I ask you a question while Brian's coming back?
Yes.
Do we, I don't know when we decided it would be called repair and capital expense fund. Apparently it was in our minutes from the very first time we had a meeting and created it.
Yeah.
So maybe it's not happening in this, but if there, it is just a sort of misleading, not easy to capture title, and I don't think we used it last year. I didn't know what it would take for it to be a capital reserve fund or, because it sounds repair and capital expense. First of all, I know we talk about investments versus expenses. We, I don't think we're repairing our cars with this money or making routine repairs. So it's a little deceiving and I don't know to what extent that either matters or we have the liberty, if we didn't call it that last year, to not call it that this year.
Or can we change the name in the warning?
In the warning.
To say something of the formerly known as?
Formerly known as.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I wonder whether there's, I mean, this was the, the article maybe didn't establish a name. It, it basically established a repair and capital expense fund in accordance with Title twenty-four. So, you know, maybe, maybe what we can, you know, we can remain consistent with last year's warning. In which we called it the capital fund.
Yeah. And then we don't even say the word expense because really capital is intended to imply it's an investment for longer-term expenses.
I mean, and I look at it right here, that on article six, at the two thousand seventeen annual meeting, it was established, and article twelve asked for the funding of a capital, to supplement the capital reserve fund. So why don't we go back to capital reserve fund?
Let's.
Then we don't have to come up with an acronym because it was going to be RAC. I didn't think that really sounds right either. There's all sorts of good reasons.
We have the warning in front of us. I think they only change to the warning would be article six. And we're going to change repair and capital expense fund to capital, capital fund.
Capital, capital reserve fund.
Capital reserve fund. Okay.
Should there be a question mark behind every article?
Really?
Behind two of the five.
Are asking a question.
Show the voters and show it, right?
You know...
There should be a question mark.
I think, I think it should. I think it should.
What do you think, Keely?
We certainly used question marks last year.
Okay.
We did.
Yeah.
Got that. So that will change as well on the print, next printed version.
I did notice that last year, we didn't have one of these articles. Or no, we had... Or no, we had an additional article. So.
There was, the attorney, we had under, on the annual meeting, we had an article that was specific to our information hearing. So Article Two just said hear and act upon the reports of the Essex, Essex Westford School District Officers. And then we had, I think it was Article Four that said.
Right, to receive its estimate of expenses for the ensuing year.
So legal counsel just suggested to bring those up into Article Two.
Together.
Together. He, legal counsel also suggested that the information hearing be called out specifically. There's a statute that requires an information hearing, so that's below all the articles on, which would be your Page Two. And the information hearing is just on the articles. They aren't on the election. So the information hearing isn't on the election of officers.
No, so it should be five through seven.
It should be, so the word says between the, to vote upon whereupon, it says to vote by Australian ballot on Articles Six through Eight. It should be five, right?
Yep.
Where do you see that? And vote on whereupon after Articles One through Four. Right, and then, but it says to vote by Australian ballot on Articles, it should say five through eight, not six through.
Oh, okay. Do you, are you looking at electronic version? John, John caught that. The clerk caught that, so.
It says five through nine. Yeah, I guess my question about the article that was called Four last year was just that it was very specific that it was a public informational hearing for discussion purposes only. If that was something that we like legally had to say, I didn't see that specific wording.
So Article Two now is not referencing your public, per se, your public hearing, your informational hearing. It's referencing a public presentation of the proposed budget. Your counsel has a lot of opinions about separating these two items, you know, to actually warn your annual meeting and then like two weeks beforehand, warn your informational meeting. This was, you know, this was somewhat trying to move into some kind of compromise to what have we done in the past, what did last year's look like and what would satisfy his and our needs going forward.
Is, are these language pieces, Brian, required?
Yes.
The following places?
Yep. We have added outside of village parentheses behind town because we've heard and your school clerk has heard that it's helpful to note that.
To avoid last year.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I guess more on how it's talking about the informational hearing.
So are you at the bottom of the.
It's the second page, yeah. I understand that it's an informational hearing to discuss Articles Five through Seven. I just wonder if that's gonna cause any confusion since the Australian ballot encompasses also the election of the directors. But we're not discussing that at the informational hearing.
This is pretty standard. I'd be surprised if people were confused.
But we don't need to say that it's for discussion purposes only.
It says to discuss. It doesn't say to vote upon.
Okay. I just thought that last year was like really clear that you don't get to do the thing that you do at town meeting where you edit things.
Are you comfortable?
Whatever legal counsel thinks, as long as they've thought of that.
You do notice that is, is our first time that we're warning the election school officers.
No, I think we had that article. We at least wrote the article.
Yes, we wrote the article.
John Sonnich is gonna let me see the. They're sent for printing. Okay, any other questions on the morning? Are we ready to approve that? Entertaining motion, everybody understand the changes that have been made. Have changed Repair and Capital Expense Fund to Capital Reserve Fund. And have added question marks in Articles Eight and Nine. I think that's the only changes we've made. Okay?
Just clarification, do we have to vote on the CTE budget separately?
Yes.
Before we approve the warning?
We should do that. You're right. That's right. So let me find that. That number is right there. It should be right there. Okay, so we discussed that budget. Let me find February fifth. And this, this doesn't have the numbers in it, does it? So we should vote separately on the CTE budget and then we can vote on the whole warning. So entertain a motion that we approve a budget for the Center for Technology Essex of eight million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Thanks, Liz. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Do you have any questions about the numbers that are going in the articles in the morning? So let me just review. In Article Five, it will say to expand eighty-one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then further down, which will result in education spending of sixteen thousand, one hundred and four dollars. And that spending per equalized pupil is one point eight one percent higher. And Article Six, that's gonna be three hundred and sixty-five thousand, will be assigned to the Capital Reserve Fund. And Article Seven, the CTE budget that we just voted on, is eight million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Yes.
I just noticed a spare word. In the final paragraph, I duly noticed called and held a meeting. You don't need the a between held and meeting.
Where are you?
In the very last paragraph of the entire warning.
Adopted, approved, and called. Take out the A.
Between held and meeting. Yes.
Did we say why?
What word to take out?
Under informational hearing?
You just put an extra period.
Right.
Shall also serve as an informational hearing.
Is this you?
No, it's the first line of the last paragraph. Adopted and approved, duly noticed, called. Take that A out. Yep.
Yeah. Oh my god, too many.
And Brendan correctly noted that we leave people in suspense by failing to punctuate.
They're not gonna know what to do next.
The castle, ahh. Oh my gosh.
I think I took that out.
Motion, yes, we had a motion, Brian. Kim, we have a motion on the morning?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay.
I don't think there was a motion actually. I think there was only, we only did a motion for the CTE budget.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the budget, I mean approve the warning.
So moved.
Okay, Kim makes the motion. Now we'll officially vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, so do you wanna print out a new copy?
We could start to circulate the back page.
Oh, because it doesn't have.
And I will marry up.
Put in the new numbers.
So it's getting late, so let's move on to the scroll, school calendar.
I thought we were done the meeting.
It's not late enough.
So the calendar that you have, that you were sent is, I'm trying to pull it up. It does, do you have any questions about it? What your role as a board is to adopt the calendar as in the number of student days, which is one hundred and seventy-eight days. And the number of staff days is a hundred and eighty-nine days according to our contract. I can speak to it a little bit. We did end up, before me, there were, sometimes the February vacation included those days in March up to town meeting. And sometimes they didn't. This year, as a leadership team and also listening to students at Essex High School, the town meeting day, we decided that to take the day off. This year, students asked for more security. We have more police on that day at both buildings. So I thought it was really awesome that students spoke up and wanted more security around. I, we went with the full day being off, so we didn't have to deal with that. And that was a change back to a older schedule. We did, what it does is make two staff days at the end of the year. One of those days, that's what ends up happening. Our Martin Luther King Day, the leadership team really felt it's a great time to do community service, to talk about diversity and really have a learning day. So it's a half learning day and a half a professional development day instead of a full day off for students, which was really exciting to have a leadership team really talk about the work that they could do around that day. I think Kevin, you missed that meeting. I knew you would. Do you have any other questions about it? No?
I'll entertain, I'll entertain motion that we approve the calendar with a hundred and seventy-eight student hours as presented. I'll fix the motion. Any discussion?
I did have a question. I was just behind in my thinking and writing at the same time. Where do we deviate from the regional calendar?
So the regional calendar, this is very similar. What the regional calendar allows are for some religious holidays. But this is exactly what the regional calendar does. And actually, I had some staff this year ask that in October, see the seventeenth and eighteenth. They asked that if we went, they wanted to match that up with Columbus Day, that a lot of businesses are taking off. I can't do that and make that different from the regional day. So we had to stick to this. But I did say that I would bring that forward in another year to the regional superintendents. But one of the reas, another reason why we went with those two March dates is because a lot of the other districts surrounding us do that. And it makes it really difficult for CTE to have some students, no students. So they've gone with no students. They've been, they had Monday and Tuesday off. They had just staff. So we tried to get, there's flexible days within the regional calendar, but this is the basic and this is what we went with.
I would add that that March third is Super Tuesday. It might be a good day to have on.
Yes, I, well, I even noticed in our parking lot, I, we had people driving in all different directions when kids were getting out of school. I was walking at the end of school and I went to vote and was walking back. I was a little nervous and cars were honking and driving the wrong way. So I, I am really happy in that we went this way.
And Diane's right, next March is the presidential primary. So it's gonna be a much different voting day.
And that's what happened in November, right, with the primaries and that's when the students.
For, yes, I would say that the next counter, you know, is gonna be the same reason as to contemplate.
Well, we might have to get into the habit of doing it.
Well, no, just maybe perhaps just for presidential when you have the superintendents for the next time.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna be a zooey day.
Are we ready for vote?
Can I just ask that we scroll up just to see, I'm thinking of snow days and graduation date and how are we wrapping up the year? Just to anticipate.
So we wrap up on a Friday, which probably wouldn't be a Friday. It would end up probably into the next week.
So this happened before, I'm sure Brian will remember, that declaring the graduation date with either a week for kids to potentially get in trouble and not walk. Or to, to have it before and not necessarily know if they're done with finals.
Right.
That year was a challenge. It actually frankly went back and forth with dates and families were trying to figure stuff out. And we had that question this year, I'm sure, already with the snow days, it's graduation moving. So I offer that as a sensitivity that's real and I wonder if that's been considered and what the options are.
It has not been considered, yeah.
That's not our job. I think it's something you can ask to think about. But it's not what we need to do in terms of this calendar.
But when we adopt the calendar, it goes public and live.
We adopt the number of student days in the calendar.
So at what point will you be making the calendar live? We've never.
We send it to the, it has to be to the Agency of Education by March fifteenth and then it goes, we have people calling now, like what's the?
Yeah, I'm sure.
What's the February break next year?
It was problematic before. I don't know if you've looked at other schools' calendars. And the other issue is that we're still negotiating number of dates for teachers.
That would have to change. That would change. If that changes with our contract, then this would change. But I have to get this into the state and then I would amend that with the state after.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Test team updates, communications.
So I thank you, Ben, for providing an update for us on the budget, where we are with the budget. And I'll just go quickly. The mailer will be mailed out as soon as Brian gives Ben the approved numbers that we just came up with. It will go to EJ, ET and Westford residents, plus those in Essex Town and Westford who might have a different town as their mailing addresses. We've had that problem. The annual report has to be finished and available at least ten days prior to the vote. Ben is in the process of working on that and he's just waiting on a few pieces and that should go to the printer by mid-March. March twenty-sixth is the goal to have that ready. Hard copies will be available at locations that we will make obvious. It will be online or people can call and get one mailed directly to their homes. We have a budget focused webpage, which is accessible near the top of each of the eleven websites on the district page. All new budget presentations have been posted on the site and shared on social media. An email to all families and a front porch forum post will be going. An email to all families and a frontcourt forum post will be going out soon, soon with the budget info and voting information. Another round with this information will go out at the end of March or the first couple of days of April. And an ad will appear in the Essex Reporter tomorrow, letting the public know when and where the annual report will be available. So I think we're in really good shape with budget communications. Our team is meeting tomorrow with Martha to start talking about the May engagement date for the board and the voices work. There's no specific update right now on that, but we are still working on the stuff I gave an update on last week.
Questions, comments?
As we're publicizing things, are we gonna be interacting with Channel Seventeen as a discussion of what the budget's about? Like they have forums for municipal budgets and whatnot. Is there one for schools? Okay, I wanna talk.
I can certainly find out.
I'm thinking about our goal to encourage turnout, so I'm thinking of how can we encourage more turnout? Is, well, okay, we, then we would try this.
No, I know. I'm, I'm sorry to, um, what's the word? I'm not thinking, but at the moment, I'm discouraged. I was discouraged by the turnout at town meeting Monday night in Westford for voting yesterday. So there have been times in the past when at least, well, that the public access stations have let us do a budget presentation that then's put out. So it's worth asking.
Okay.
At the same time.
I recognize, but I'm trying to think of avenues of what we haven't done, what can we add into the system?
Right.
You know, is there gonna be, do we wanna consider some outreach for, for next time as to what potentially, what we might do for outreach to reach voters?
Yes. So let's put that next to, you know, Brendan had an idea for a I will vote campaign, you know, do you wanna to go forward with something like that?
We can talk about that at communications tomorrow. That's on the agenda for that.
Beth?
I have something I would like to add to the communications. We have been working on a video for EWSD. We wanted that to be out but right around budget time. It is done. It is complete. We would like to show it. I meant to show it at the beginning of the night and then I got so excited about the budget that I didn't. So here it is.
Three vibrant communities unified to provide enhanced and expanded educational options for all students. With the idea that we are better together, in the Essex-Westford School District, we are designing opportunities that meet the unique needs of all our learners. As one of the largest school districts in the state of Vermont, students from preschool through twelfth grade walk through our doors each day, eager to take advantage of the resources provided by our supportive communities. Every student is supported by highly qualified and caring educational leaders, educators and staff who strive to make our schools a place where everyone belongs, feels safe and is respected. Learning happens here. Students are challenged by a rigorous, well-balanced, proficiency-based curriculum and supported by our dedicated teachers and staff who believe in and are passionate about what they do. Our staff are more than just employees, they are neighbors as well. Nearly fifty percent of our staff live in one of the three communities that they support. Growing hearts and minds for a better today and tomorrow. Every day, every way, everyone. This is the EWSD vision, which was shaped with the help of community members, students and staff. This North Star guides our work to support both emotional and academic growth with engaged and inspired learners. Each student must be prepared for success in college, further study or employment when they graduate, as these students in our classrooms today will be the leaders of tomorrow. Our students learn outside of the classroom through experiences like internships and each of our schools are heavily involved in community service activities such as food drives, fundraisers and community appreciation days. We recognize each individual and accept everyone for their uniqueness and beliefs, empowering students by letting them shape their own learning and letting their voices be heard. Our priorities in the EWSD. Our schools not only provide a path of education, but also many inclusive extracurricular clubs and programs where students get to choose their paths. The arts and athletics are strong in our schools as our students are continuously acknowledged for their work and performance on both the local and the state levels. We are ten schools, three communities and one district. Together, we can continue to help grow hearts and minds for a better today and tomorrow. Every day, every way, everyone.
That voice is just.
I know. I feel so familiar.
I was trying to.
Student.
Okay. Any other questions or comments under communication? Okay, statewide updates. Kim, is there anything we need to talk about tonight? I think there's lots of stuff ongoing. I would encourage you to keep reading the ESPN newsletters. Maybe the biggest things that's happened is that the judge refused to stop the Act Forty-Six mergers that were put forward by the state board and in fact, the decision really took apart their major arguments for their case. So I think lots of people think that case is pretty weak at this point, except for the lawyers who are arguing for the dissenting districts. So I think that was.
Interesting to see from that information and that extensive opinion or non-position if the Senate decides to take up the bill that's sitting with them that they were waiting on because it allows half of the communities to wait another year based on certain criteria. And so I, it'll be interesting to see what happens with that at this point.
Yeah.
One other statewide update, which I think is exciting that happened yesterday, is that Brattleboro passed by nine hundred to four hundred, a youth, a youth vote amendment that allows sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to vote on local elections and also to serve on local school boards with a charter change in that town. So that's pretty cool.
That's so cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next meeting agenda?
I'm sorry.
So we just said that we wanted to talk about get out the vote ideas. I do think we should do a book read for that meeting. We have a number of things on our work plan.
One of them is looking at data. So we will look at.
Yes. Data.
Thank God. Please.
Student report, right?
Pardon?
Student report?
Yes.
Transportation update.
Oh, is that transportation procedure?
So I should say around transportation updates. I talked to Beth and Brian at our last agenda meeting. Kim, I think this is after you. We're gonna move the transportation updates to just one time a month. I think at that point, at this point, that should be sufficient. Anything else?
Has the junction transportation started?
No. We don't have enough jobs. Yeah. Okay. So we're here. Would you please mark your calendars for April thirtieth? We are in the process of planning a board retreat to do some further discussion of roles and responsibilities. We haven't finalized this, but we are in conversation with Brian O'Grady, working with us for that retreat. If we come to agreement with him, he will be asking board members probably to fill out a survey and possibly to have some short conversations with him prior to the retreat so that we can really focus on the things that we need to get better at.
We did discuss starting at five thirty, so that might be good to know now. I know.
Not happening. I'll see you when I see.
April thirtieth is a Tuesday.
Well, I was hoping with enough notice.
If it were, we're having it at nine in the morning. I have kids in school. That works. So, yeah. But the time when.
Five thirty would be.
I haven't had a functional babysitter in years, so.
My daughter.
If you're serious, see if Adalikes her.
Five thirty on April thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. And message to the community, I guess the message is budget, budget, budget.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Is Patrick? I'll do it. Or if you're there, Pat, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay. It's all good.
Okay. Anything else? I just wanna say, I think you all did a great job tonight. I think we had a full and respectful discussion of the budget items and I appreciate that. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.